Welcome to the Henry County Commissioners Meeting for August 11th. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a short prayer? Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless his country and bless his county, and that we would conduct our business in a way that is pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted with a vote of three zero. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review the payroll?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll is approved, motion three zero. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review the claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Claims are approved, three zero. First item of business, Linda Winchester.
Good evening, I'm here to present two contracts to you with U.S. Imaging. The purpose of those are to move our office completely digital. People will be able to dial in, not to us, but to another company, to look at, they won't have to come into the office. They can come in, they can do that at home or at work, wherever. And it brings us into the next century. And we'd be ready for another pandemic or whatever. When people couldn't come in, they could go online and get their documents. So, I've looked at two different companies. I have talked to recorders around the state. U.S. Imaging, which is this company, the reasons I want to go with them, their equipment, they use a color laser scanner that will help with the resolution and make the documents clearer. They're going back to the 1820s. Those records are old and crumbly, but they can take a picture of them and make them look black and white instead of yellow and faded black. The second thing is, they do our film. They will rescan our film and make it digital. Then our software company will take all of the digital equipment, or the digital film and copies, put it into our system so that we can search on it. So when someone calls in, you're not going in. And handling the older books and wearing those out even more, transferring oil from your skin onto the book, they deteriorate rapidly. But we won't have to lift the books either. Those books are not light. They are heavy. But this just brings us into the modern age of electronics with digital everything and easier for people to do and look at. The total for both contracts is $238,892. I have that in my perpetuation fund. I've been saving up for this for three years, trying to get enough money so that we can get it done. And I appreciate your approval. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Eight ninety-two, twenty-seven. That is a high total, I believe, and so does the salesman, because we wanted to overestimate, I didn't want to come up short. So, some of these books, there won't be images to be had. They'll be too faded. There was a period of years where they did the old photo stack copies where it's black background, white lettering. Some of the white lettering has disappeared. They will try to bring that back with their lasers and their newer equipment, but there's no guarantee. And so then you don't pay for what you don't get.
Martin, have you reviewed this?
Yes.
What'll be done onsite and what'll be done, most of them will be done here?
Yes, they'll come in, they'll use our back room and scan every, all the books, everything that needs to be scanned that way will be done onsite. I did not want our books leaving the courthouse. It just creates too many chances for error. So, they would come in and 24/7, they have two shifts. The total length of this project is approximately a year, because there are checks that we have to do before they'll go further. We make sure that we agree with what they have done, that the quality is there. And then, once that's done, I have to sign off on it. And that entails a lot of checking, and that's why I have part-time people that are being trained now. They'll know how to check those documents. I have additional microfilm readers that they can check all of those documents. But we have quality control, because you don't want to pay this much money for something you can't. Yes.
So you said 24, they'll be here 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Is that what you said?
Two shifts.
Two shifts?
Two shifts, for about, he thought maybe two weeks to a month, but that's, just depends. They'll use my back room. I can either be here with them when they come, or we'll figure something out to get it done, because we want to get it done expediently and not drag it out as, you know, longer than necessary.
The last 26 years will be done onsite, the others will be onsite.
Those are the older ones that you don't want to leave?
Yes.
My mic on, those are the older ones you don't want to leave the premises, okay?
Yes.
So we don't, how far do our records go back?
Eighteen twenty-two.
Oh, so they are going back to the oldest records we have?
Yes, the genealogists will just love us, because we get calls you would not believe, emails, calls. Great-great-grandpa was here in eighteen.
Right, yeah.
Yes, and they would like to see that deed or be able to get a copy of it and things like that. Now they can go online and search for it.
And how long did you say it would take to do the project?
Approximately a year, because we're talking about several records. Between the scanning and getting, once we get that scanned, that doesn't finish with it. Those instruments have to be transferred to, they're going to put them on a thumb drive for us or CD, however I requested. Then also, we have to get them logged into CSI, dumped into CSI. I'm hoping that wasn't a little long, because I'm out of here a year and five months.
Year and five months, how many days?
Haven't done that yet, but.
Linda, you also pay them in stages too, it's not one lump sum upfront.
Right, yes. It goes, I will not, I won't pay the whole sum upfront. That's just, not that I don't trust them, it's just better to, I'll pay it in stages. There's like four stages that, and when each one's completed to our satisfaction, then we'll go on to the next one.
I'm glad you took the initiative on this, because it might have been a very long time before the county had an extra $200 and some odd thousand dollars. And I think it is a worthwhile thing. I just think without you having saved that money over the years, that this probably wouldn't happen.
Thank you.
So thank you for that. Do I have a motion to accept these two contracts?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the contracts is passed three zero.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. And is anyone here from the EDC?
Penny sent a text earlier, said that they didn't have anything to update and would not be here tonight.
Okay, next item then is interlocal agreement with Mount Summit for road material. We are entering into an interlocal agreement with the town of Mount Summit. I don't think I'll read the whole thing. We have some additional salt and sand at our highway department, and they would like to purchase some of it if it is still available when they need it. And we are entering into an agreement with them, which will allow them to do this.
Joe, have you, have you read this agreement with, you have not seen it or read it?
Yeah, I've seen it, yeah, it's no problem.
I'll make a motion to accept the interlocal agreement between Mount Summit and Henry County for the purchase of salt and sand.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next thing we have is a pipeline easement for Garner Street. And maybe if you could speak to that? You have to talk right into it, it is working though.
There we are, okay. There was an agreement for what was Vectren, Indiana Gas, the name escapes me right now, for an easement along Garner Street there. Earlier, you had signed an easement in January for another part of Garner Street. Earlier this week, there was an unfortunate incident where basically a large amount of corn was just literally flattened to the ground. And so, I talked with Ms. Santos from the gas company today, and we, Steve and I contacted her yesterday, Steve did before I did. And so, we're not going to be in a position right now to approve it. They are going to amend their easement. Steve and I discussed putting a provision there that they, we must give them the owner's name, our owner's name, who to contact. And if there's a tenant, for example, like we have out there, the tenant's name, number, and other contact information. They will in the future endeavor to contact both us personally, by phone, not personally, by phone or email, and the same thing with the tenant. And so, that will be inserted in our new agreement. There is apparently some, there is some money that's been escrowed for damages for what has occurred. I'm not sure it's enough. And so, they did apologize, and so we're going to remedy that, hopefully by putting some extra provisions in the contract, in the lease easement agreement.
I did notice in here, and I assume the other easement that we passed, it does have a contingency for crop damage.
My understanding that crop damage, my understanding for that crop damage, there was approximately $9,000 reserved. I'm not sure that will cover what was done there because of the price it was contracted for. And so, they are, they seem very concerned about it and want to get it fixed. And I think the impetus there will be also that this is, this new easement is a continuation of what they're doing now, so they need to get this done soon and wrapped up. So, she will be contacting the tenant, and they apologize to the county and to, will apologize to Kent too. So nothing on that tonight, other than that.
So, we're not going to deal with this tonight?
Do we need to?
I was going to make a motion to table it for now.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of tabling the easement until the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
We will table the meeting by a vote of three to zero. Next item is our cybersecurity insurance policy. Covers things like our telephones, security on them, the identity theft, corporate extortion, theft of personal funds, telephone hacking, bush payment fraud, unauthorized use of computer resources. Assume I T guy looked over this and is happy with this policy. Any questions or discussion about the policy?
No, and I believe that all of this got renewed in July. I believe this is just, just the reporting of it, just to be accepted with the report, the monthly reports.
Okay, so there's no action to vote on?
I don't believe so.
On that policy, okay. Moving right along then. We have three reports. Coroner's Office Monthly Report, County Treasurer's Monthly Report, and the Clerk's Monthly Report. Is there any discussion about these reports? If there is none, do I have a motion to accept the reports?
Make a motion to accept reports as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the reports passes three zero. We have several items that have been bid on. First one up is Elite Cleaning and Building. This is for the Justice Center. This is to wash all the windows inside and out, which hasn't been done in many years, which requires a lift truck, I believe they're going to use two lift trucks. And the number of windows in that building, I think the bid sounded reasonable. Any discussion over the bid? It's $2,500 to clean all the windows in the Justice Center inside and out.
And I believe Greg said there's, I can't remember, Greg said 120 or 130? I think 120 windows in the Justice Center. So $2,500, $2,500 for 120 windows, I believe, is pretty good. So I'll make a motion to accept this as presented.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting Elite Cleaning and Buildings bid?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero to accept the window washing bid. We also have a bid for, we have had numerous times in the last couple of years, very expensive bills in the Y O C building, out in the park, and in the Justice Center across the street. Every time there's a power outage and things get turned back on, it seems to cause damage to some very sophisticated equipment, sometimes running into many thousands of dollars. So we've had a couple of different companies looking into protecting us against these surges. And this one contract for the Y O C building, which is $5,800, installs RayVos surge protection device. I think I would like the motion to hold that one up until we can talk to the Y O C about that. So I would, I would make a motion to table this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero to table that bid until the next meeting. This one is for about the same equipment for the Henry County Justice Center. And we have had the same type of problems over there. It is from Custom Electrical Services for $6,650. It provides and installs new 200K RayVos surge protection device, new breaker for the Justice Center, 2,500 amp main service. Since we do have money in our budget for this, I would, any discussion first?
This will come out of the building corp?
Yes, it would.
Correct? I'll make a motion to accept this quote as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bid of $6,650 for surge protection in the Justice Center is approved by a vote of three to zero. We have another bid from Custom Electrical Service. This is a problem we've had for several years. All of the exit, emergency exit lights in the building are the old type that have battery packs. And it has been recommended that we replace them all with new LED lights. And this bid is for replacing all the brushed aluminum exit signs with LED with red lettering, and the brushed aluminum exit egress combo LED with red lettering, and the LED emergency lights off-white in color. Three separate bids that, the first is 11-925 for the LED lights with the red lettering. They need 45 of those, and they are $265 apiece. We need eight brushed aluminum exit egress combination signs. They are $280 apiece, so eight of those are $2,240. And we need 100 LED emergency light off-white in color. They are $80 apiece, so that is a total of 8,000. So to replace all the emergency lights in the building, total bid is $22,165. Any discussion over that?
I'll make a motion to accept this bid as it also comes out of the building corp.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have two bids for replacing the doors in the Henry County Courthouse, that is the four main entrance doors. They were, the bids are fairly close. We've got one bid. This would be for one main door and two side panels at each of the four entrances to this building. We've got a bid from Henry County Glass and Mirror. Since the bids were two different types of glass, their bid originally was $15,082.36. But when you upgrade the glass to make it the same glass as the other company was offering, that brings their bid up to $19,082. The other company, Newcastle Glass and Mirror, their bid for a similar project is $20,000.
I would like to, if we approve this on the contingency, after we talk with the historical people to make sure that we don't do anything to change the appearance of the building where it messes with us in a future restoration on the building. If it doesn't, then I don't have a problem approving it.
Do you know, Martin, if changing the doors changes the historical?
I have not looked into that aspect of it, but I, I think probably it would be subject to on this. And you'd have to have that in writing from them, so.
I've got a call to Landmarks, and I haven't heard anything back from them yet. Was trying to verify that, so I don't have a problem approving it with that contingency.
Provided they give you a written agreement, a written assurance that, yes, okay.
Well, the doors that we have are not the historic doors.
No.
They're aluminum doors now.
No, that's true, but they, when we had, YGAN out here was looking at those, they said since they had been done so many years ago, they weren't sure how that would affect what we did from here forward. So I just wanted to get verification and clarification on that.
I only think one of those has the panic bar.
The basement door is the only one that has the panic bar. These will include, these will include the panic bars as well.
Okay.
If we, if, I suggest that if we do anything, we'll all make the motion. If we're going to make anything contingent, then we just table it until we get the additional information.
That's fine. It's only two weeks to our next meeting.
Did, Steve, did you already make a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Are you going to withdraw your motion or change your motion?
I guess you're going to twist my arm, yeah.
You can do whatever.
I can withdraw it, we can table it.
I make the motion to table this until we get the full information necessary. And that'll give Henry County Glass an opportunity to actually update with actual numbers on the, changing to the double pane glass.
That's fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling this bid until the next meeting?
Aye.
Motion is made and the bid is tabled until our next meeting. We have another motion for another, a bid, excuse me, for a project that's been put off for quite some time. It was bid last year, and for some reason, I think it was approved and it didn't get done. So it was rebid, and this is to furnish labor and material and equipment to do the following work. It's short enough, I'll just read it. This is at the backside of the Masonic Building, between the Masonic Building and the Justice Center. Remove existing shingles off small shingled roof in the rear of a building down to the wood deck and remove the building, remove from the building and premises. Remove any deteriorated decking will be replaced at an additional cost of $3.50 a square foot. Install ice and water shield felt at the gutter edge and apply an underlayment felt over the remaining small roof area. Remove the old metal valley and set aside to be reinstalled later. And install new dimensional shingles, reinstall the old metal valley, new metal step flashing along the brick wall, and new metal counter flashing will also be installed at that time. This bill, bid is by the McGruff Roofing Incorporated from Muncie, and it's a bid of $5,485. There is damage being caused in this building because of water getting in. Any discussion on this bid? If not, do I have a motion to accept this bid from McGruff Roofing?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Do any of the departments have anything to? Joe, welcome, come on up.
Good evening. I have three items this evening. First one is a, a grant that I applied for on the 29th of July to the Indiana Finance Authority. I, I was able to get a, a grant number, it's G dash 21 dash 007. And it's for stormwater in particular, but it had to be related to a state road. That was the, and, and as my understanding, you have $60 million to give out. So I thought of the one at 200 North and State Road 3. The Northwest Corner Floods is subdivision. And it actually gets out on the State Road 3 at times. And luckily I was able to get a video that showed that. I submitted it and asked for $2,138,610 from the IFA. I said we'd put up 50,000. That's it. And they said we could use ARPA funds in the application, okay? We're going to be doing enough roadwork if last resort, we could use highway funds because we're going to be working on the streets back there in that subdivision to get ditches done and, and water flowing and so. But they, they will pay for everything. They will pay for design, they will pay for construction, and they will pay for inspection. They will not pay for easements and right of way. So there's got to be an easement of some kind to get a pipe from over there at that subdivision over to 3, and then under 3, we're going to put a larger structure in of some kind. And then get it to the open ditch on the east side of the road of, of 3 on the south side of 200 North. There's an open ditch and that's where we want to take it. So they sent back and said that they should have the award done and figured out by the end of the month. So we should know something before too long. But it's, it's great money. I mean, it's 2.1 million for, and they'll pay for practically all of it. Hope that's, okay. I tried to think of another location that, why do states come to mind, but there's no State Road close that I could tie it to. So I was not able to do that, so. Next item is Bridge 127 on 325 East, south of 200 North. I want to replace that structure. And to do so, I had got permission to buy the, the piling. It just came in yesterday for this bridge. And now I need a superstructure for the bridge. I got a, a quote, or, or, yeah, you should call it a quote, I guess, a proposal from E N H Bridge and Grading. They'd bid the annual bid and their bid was accepted for different sized bridges, different sized structures. This will include the structural steel, the bearing plates, the guardrail, the guardrail posts on the side of the bridge. It'll include a metal decking on top of the bridge. All that for a total cost delivered of $88,928. And this bridge will be 40 foot long and 26 foot wide. One of the local farmers who was out there measuring stopped and I asked how, how wide he needs it and he says, as wide as you can get it. So the current one's 24, so I'm going to, I'm going to squeak a little bit and try to get it out to 26, okay? So that, hopefully it'll help him a little bit. But what I'm, I'm looking for is approval to award the proposal to E N H Bridge and Grading for $88,928 so we can get things moving. I'd like to start this bridge in probably be late October.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this proposal for this bridge?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the bridge bid is three to zero.
Thank you. Next item is, we have an opportunity to pick up a, a, a small used loader. We've been looking for one for a while.
What was that?
A, a, a used small loader. Oh, a small used loader, okay? And, and the main purpose will be to pick up soil off the edge of the road. When we burn the road, the, the grader goes through and pulls it back toward the road. They call clipping the berm or whatever, but they bring the material back. We have to load it up and haul it away. So we're going to use this loader to haul it up. It, it will reach over the back of the trucks is the reason that we like this particular model. And, and they can, he can just pull up with the loader and load it right on the back without them having to turn the truck sideways. All right? He looked at two different loaders. And the other one was, was, had a few less hours, but it was a little rougher shape. It had been in Michigan on rental with cat and it was a little rough, Dale said. I saw pictures of it, yeah, it looked a little rough. But in the meantime, Dale says we need to get rid of a couple of pieces of equipment. And I said, and, and I agree with him. He wants to trade in the bald, what they call the bald ditcher. It throws material out of the side ditch into fields. And my understanding and talking to some of the people and Dale too, that a lot of people do not like that, throwing that type of material, plus there's trash and everything else that goes out in the field. Besides that, every pole you come to, you have to pull it up and go around it. And every mailbox you come to, you have to pull up, go around it. We don't intend to use it because we're going to use another piece of equipment to do, do that with, or the road grader. When we burn, we can also cut a side ditch. Little more efficient. So we got some prices on that and we have a 2006 model year New Holland tractor that we're not using anymore. It's articulated in the center. And it was originally bought to pull a special piece of equipment that like scarifies the road, the asphalt up. And that's been sold a few years ago, is my understanding. It's, it's gone. And they tried to put a mower on it, but because of the articulation in the center of the tractor, you turn left, the mower goes right. You understand? It does kind of the opposite. So, so they bent the mower, okay? The mower's not, can't be used. So there's no use in keeping it on, on the lot, so we want to get rid of it. But here's, here's the quote.
Deem them as either obsolete or no longer?
Yeah, no longer, yeah.
Is that right?
Take, swing, take it off the inventory and sell them or trade them. So the final cost is 44,000. The original price, they wanted for the loader is 81.5. Dale was able to get them down 5,000. The trade in for the bald ditcher is 15 and the trade in for the New Holland tractor is 15. So it comes down to a net cost of $44,000, which is less than 50. I've, I've not had good experience in selling equipment like that in local sales. Of course, I've been doing this for 30 years or better than 30 years and you don't get the people you need at those sales to sell that kind of equipment.
Joe, is this bald ditcher, is it something that they're just not using anymore elsewhere?
Right. We're not using it or the tractor.
There was an issue with some fiber optics a few years ago. And then the same thing with the New Holland, that the way it operates, there's just not a market for it or?
It's been sitting the whole time I've been here since October and Dale says it's been sitting longer than that. They don't have a use for it.
We ought to make sure the minutes back here reflect those factors and I can get with, if anybody help from there. We, we need to make sure the minutes reflect those factors in that we have it.
Any more discussion by the commissioners? There's no discussion and I will make a motion that we trade in the bald ditcher and the 2006 New Holland tractor and purchase the used loader from Southeastern Equipment for the final cost after trades of 44,000.
Joe, do they give you any kind of warranty with that?
No, I don't think so, not I know of it. Dale, Dale has, has ran it, moved it around, moved some material and, and he feels it's, it's, it's a good buy, it's in good condition. I had him, of course, he always does that before we buy them.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Thank you. Any questions about anything? We're, we're, we're strip paving right now. The last job they just finished was 250 East, north of Dublin Pike. And they're moving to the southeast tomorrow, doing some more, so they, they've been busy.
New pave are working all right?
Great, they love it. Yeah, lays a nice mat. I was over when they were laying Kennard Road on either side of 70 and it was, yeah, it's, it's nice. Working out real well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other departments have a report? Mr. Rust?
It's really not a report, but I'd like to add on to Linda Winchester's concerns with all of our documents that we have in our offices. I don't think any of our documents in the surveyor's office have been scanned and put on anywhere. We all know if something burns, we've lost from the 18th century up all of our documents. This is why I'm brought up to Steve and I've talked to him and I've talked to you, Ed, and I haven't had a chance to sit down with Bobby, but we had the CARES Act money to begin with and that's when the IT person come up and suggested that all of our offices look at things that we can do to get in a COVID deal again, that we're going to have to keep people out of our office, which we had that in our office. We're building the jail. I couldn't let the surveyors in to do their surveying for the new jail. They wanted in badly to get that. So we had to put them in a back room, take all the books back there so they get tie cards and look for surveys out there because there was none done out there. This is a very important piece of Henry County as far as new development, keeping people out of the office if we have COVID and other things that go on with my office with section corners, all my documents in my drainage, watersheds and other documents with maps. So the COVID money to begin with, we didn't, it went and we're done with it. We do have 4.5 million sitting there. It is in those regulations that you can use it on that. I would highly suggest that we put some money towards that. It's not a big amount.
Are you talking about the art money?
The 4.5 million, the new money. If you look in there.
The art money? I'm asking, are you talking about the art money?
Yeah, whatever it's called, but that is in there. You know, this will keep people out of our office completely. All surveyors have looked at that and has really said that'd be a big portion because we don't even have to come to your office. We can get on Beacon, they're, they'll put it on at no cost. And they can get on there and pull tie cards, anything they need to do a survey in this county. So I would, you know, I see what she's doing. I don't have those funds as much as what she built.
Now, we've been talking about this quite a while. Do you have the dollar figure?
Yeah, well, I give it to you and, you know, I get it back to you, yes. So I will bring that back to you, but I would really appreciate that. We're looking at documents that can't be replaced, period. We lose those, we lose everything from the 18th century up from all them drains. And there is good information in there, just like she said, the art caves is very, they love that information to be online. So I'm just asking to really seriously look at putting something in it. You don't have to do the whole project, but let's get started somewhere.
I, I would suggest that you put together a proposal.
I have.
Because, you know, and I'm not saying that it's, but to come to when, when the art committee is formed and, and, yeah.
I just wanted to mention that because, you know, the first money went by and it was gone.
Right, in the next few months, we will be taking proposals to use.
Can you send an email out to give us a meeting time or whenever you're going to do that?
Yeah, because we haven't created the committee yet because, and then we'll, yes, all of that will be how to, how to, how to present your proposal, where to present your proposal, what the timeframe is to present the proposal. All of that information will be sent, yes.
I appreciate it. I just wanted to mention that because she brought it up and that's a good, good thing to think about.
I'll say, I think it's good that you're, it needs to be done.
Yes, I would say.
I think every department in the county should be considering this or doing it at some point because, like I said, if we have some kind of catastrophe, then we've lost everything. So I think we need to do it, it's just getting the money to do it.
If it's possible, I would get it started. Because I can continue my department if I get it started. I have enough money to add to it every year to, to help that, but I don't have, you know, enough to do it all.
And it may be something that we, yeah, we pool all the offices and get a better quote and do it all at once. But yes.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy? Jay? Mandy, wait a while.
Mandy's last on the list.
I know that. I thought there was no one else. But Jay was so quiet over there.
Thank you. On behalf of Sheriff McCorkle, there's a couple of things he asked me to present to you all tonight. One is, I believe you have a copy of a inmate medical contract, inmate medical care contract that need brought before you all tonight. I know some of this had been taken care of a while back, but it needs officially proposed tonight. And I don't know what information you're going to need on that particular contract at this time, other than it's a contract to provide for inmate medical care in the jail. It's a one-year contract for the annual cost of $382,311.
Now, the company that we lost, this company's replacing them?
That's correct.
And this, I have the contract here, but it doesn't have a price on it and you said it was 300? And what was the previous company charging us?
I, I don't have that information with me at this time, Ed.
And they, they just didn't want to insure us anymore?
That, that's correct. That's correct. And I know there was a difference in the benefits that are applied by the, to the county and to the inmates as far as what is held and the number of, although this, this contract is a little bit more or quite a bit more expensive, it's more inclusive of the prescriptions, medications, dental work, all the on. all the onsite services that are provided for the inmates.
I will make a motion that we accept this contract as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept this contract passes three zero. You want to, did you have something to say about the? Or did you have another item of business? Might as well finish while you're up there, thank you.
These documents that I presented are the maintenance building quotes that we've received for the new maintenance building out at the new jail site. You will see that there are quotes for four different companies there that vary greatly at different points. Quotes from SBK Construction, De Bruhl Construction, Klaus Construction and an American Steel Building, which is manufactured up in Mount Summit. And that would be in conjunction with Klaus Construction for, to provide the concrete work. That, uh, the SBK Construction is sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. De Bruhl Construction is fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-four. The bid from Klaus Construction is eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty. And the bid from American Steel with the conjunction of the concrete floor and that is sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
The concrete, between the De Bruhl building and the American Steel building, does the concrete part? Is there different standards we're pouring that concrete under?
The, the, the standard is with the pole type construction by De Bruhl, the, the pole provides the foundation. So it's just a concrete pad inside the pole barn building, very typical pole barn construction. Whereas the American Steel Building is set on a concrete pad that requires a footer beneath that, on the outer edge of it.
Right, so the concrete for the American Steel Building is quite a bit more than the concrete for the De Bruhl building?
The, the De Bruhl concrete was included in his price, so I'm not aware of what he was charging for it, so.
Do you want to know if the building is more expensive or the concrete is more expensive for American Steel? Something's more expensive.
So I, I know you did all the research.
Right, I, I did the research and, and.
What is your recommendation?
Between, between De Bruhl and American Steel comes down, obviously you can see less than two thousand dollars. The advantage to the American Steel Building is, they told me that getting that purchased and built would probably be quite quicker. Getting on the De Bruhl schedule may take two or three months to get that where American Steel could begin within the next couple of weeks to manufacture that building. And then they would bring that building on site once the concrete pad is, had, had time to cure.
Jay, does the American Steel versus De Bruhl, does American Steel have the footers and De Bruhl does not? Is that on the, De Bruhl is just a pad?
The American Steel Building is set on a concrete pad that has footers, whereas the pole serves as the footer for the pole type constructions that go down in the ground. And then the concrete interior of that is just a pad on top of the ground. The, the American Steel Building has a frame, has a framework that sets up on top of concrete, therefore the need for the, the footer underneath the pad.
So you said the American Steel construction can start within two to three weeks? How long will it take?
They, they said the construction at their factory, because they, they assemble that at the factory, would start within two or three weeks as soon as they could schedule that. And assembly would be in, in a week to ten days, once the pad was cured and ready. Speaking with Klaus Construction, they weren't exactly sure when they could fit it into his schedule, but he said that he would expedite that. My recommendation, because of the need for storage at the new jail site, would be to go with the American Steel Building and Klaus Construction on the footer and the foundation, or the concrete pad and the foundation.
And you already had the money set aside for this anyway, right?
Yeah, there's, there's, my understanding from speaking with all of you, there's money in the funds to build the jail that we would not have to request any extra money to build that building.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it's in the soft costs.
Pardon me?
I believe it's in the soft costs.
I think it was, yeah. E- either in the soft cost or that other set aside money, I believe, so.
I'll make a motion to recommend American Steel for building of the maintenance building at the new jail.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of giving American Steel the contract for the pole barn type building for the new jail site?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. Total bid for that was sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars plus eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. Apparently we have to pay to the great state of Indiana for approving this.
Some kind of plans approval is required structurally, so. I have one other item that's not related to the sheriff's office while I'm here, is that okay to request that? As president of the Henry County Republican Club, we're questioning the use of the courthouse lawn for our annual Brock cookout on August twenty-seventh, basically from daybreak till about two PM.
This is something that has taken place for, on the courthouse lawn for a long time.
It's been held on the courthouse lawn for at least the last twenty years that I'm familiar with, I believe, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the courthouse lawn by the Republican Club.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
I'm looking around, I don't see any other county offices.
Except.
So at the May twenty-sixth, in the May twenty-sixth meeting minutes, there was a mistake that we found afterwards where it was talking about State Road, one, an address on State Road one oh nine and it was listed as State Road one oh three. We all missed that one. So I will make a motion to approve the amended minutes, changing from State Road one oh three to State Road one oh nine of the May twenty-sixth meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to change the minutes passes three zero.
Mandy, you want to, since she's right here, you want to move Mandy out since she's a department head?
Yeah, she's, she's next anyway.
Come on, Mandy.
Well, she's on there twice.
Yeah.
Just put him on the, there.
Do you want me to go ahead and talk about the ambulance now? Okay, so we're here, this opportunity kind of fell in our lap. We've had some ambulance mechanical issues recently, last few months especially. I'm sure you're familiar that we've been band-aiding these vehicles for a long time, long before I came to this place. Last week it got pretty critical. We got down to two ambulances that barely covered the patient load we had, but to add on top of that, the city got to critically low staffing and we suddenly needed to be back up for them. We had pending site transfers, we had PCU transfers and everyone kind of had to work together to make that happen, but we had no backups. We kind of have an ambulance graveyard over there, I'm sure everyone knows it's over there. A lot of them we have deactivated, we don't use those anymore because to fix them, they're not worth fixing. The cost to fix them, it just wouldn't pay off. Fortunately, one of the ambulances that were down was actually a cheap fix, but Lucas and I did tear into that and take half the labor away and then took it to him apart so he could fix it. So it got us thinking, we needed to start looking for new ambulances. But in the process of learning about those ambulances is the length of time in which it takes to get one, which is almost a year. We're a little bit more desperate than that and I, I asked him if he knew of any really good used ones. They're really hard to find, everyone wants an ambulance right now, used or new. It's, it takes about eight to nine months to even get one built and get it to you. That's how far behind they are with the pandemic and everything. You can't get chassis, so you go on a waiting list and you wait. So it's almost a year to get new ones. He happened to have just had one, sent to him, it's coming from Chicago Fire, downtown Chicago. It's got sixty-nine thousand miles on it. He's, it's, it's a lot of stop and go there. Obviously it's sixty-nine thousand miles, he, he's not saying it hasn't been used a lot, but we have nothing that even is close to sixty-nine thousand miles. We've got five times that amount of miles on everything that we have. To us, it's new. It looks very much like the ambulances that we have now, our box trucks, and it is, it's in really good shape. He made us a really good price and I didn't know if you guys had seen the, the pictures that I brought.
And this will, this will come fully wrapped?
Yes, so in that, if you'll look on that sales invoice, the actual ambulance is lower than the twenty-nine five. The twenty-nine five is including the graphics package, which means he's going to redo the graphics for Henry County EMS. So when it's delivered, it will be ready to go on the road. So it's just a matter of having Don Watson come down and look at it. Because it's, it's like our five and six, inside and out, it's very much like that. While five is, still has all of its equipment. So where that's just sitting out there with that equipment and it's deactivated, we can move all of that into this ambulance and suddenly we have another ambulance. That's probably better than the box we're running now and then have that box as a backup. So we don't get in that situation that we were in last week. That's not going to get better, it's probably going to get worse. Everyone's having staffing issues, they're no different. And that's what happened. So we also cover the track on those days, really tough. If we was to go down two ambulances on a track day, we wouldn't even cover our load, let alone back up the city. So it's, for the price that they are willing to give us on that, including the graphics package, I can't find anything comparable. I cannot find anything comparable to it, even to do a remount on the ambulances that we have over there. The cheapest that I can find is seventy-seven thousand dollars. And that's still a four to six month period to get that.
How long will it take to get this one delivered?
Uh, he said a week.
Week.
Once he has the sales invoice, he will take it to a mechanic. They're not going to bring us something that he doesn't think is going to run. They guarantee it runs, they have to sell it as a running vehicle. It was certified and because it's Chicago, they're by the federal government, just like we are, they have to have maintenance records, that ambulance comes with those maintenance records, so you know every oil change it had, everything will be documented, but he will go make sure that it is mechanically and electrically sound because it has to be for us to run it. And that will come along with the ambulance, he'll bring that with him. And we pretty much were kind of, we're, we got to take a step forward. This was a, a easy go-between, between brand new, which I'll be back, and what we have now. So it was, he just happened to have it, and it was rushed, yes, because it dropped in his lap. Everyone wants these and I asked him to hold it. Just give me time to get here and ask for it. So if you approve it, I literally will go back to the office and scan it to him to finalize and hold it, that's how.
Mandy, it needs to be titled in the name of the county, not the, this ambulance service here, because I'm not sure there's an actual legal entity named that. So it should be titled in the name of the county.
Yes, yeah, and I believe that that is something, the man that, that, I asked him to type this up, I mean, I, minutes, I gave him minutes, I said I have to have it. He is the one that will actually go get the truck, drive it here, take it to get the decals, bring it back. So he's literally was on the road.
Change to Henry County?
Yeah, so I just need to change, make sure that he realizes that it's Henry County EMS and not ambulance service.
Would you, you prefer it to Henry County EMS?
I think it's all, well, I think all of them titled in the name of the county.
Henry County Commissioners?
I'll just tell him to send the actual, yeah, I can email him, I can send back down and email, have him email it, yeah.
I will make the motion to approve the purchase of the new to us ambulance for an amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Motion passes three zero. It is a pretty good looking ambulance, I'm surprised something from Chicago isn't all beat up.
I bet it's gotten, it's not, actually. I had a lot of pictures, but he sent it in a mega file that Lucas and I had to spend about an hour trying to figure out how to just print those two pictures. You can't crack it, I don't know, it was weird.
We're also going to take the opportunity of him wrapping this ambulance to rebrand our service, change color schemes.
To match the schemes on your?
Yeah, we're going to switch to blue and orange on all our ambulances. There's no really point in doing it to the ones that we have now, obviously. If you need the trucks in, we'll do it that way because it would just be too expensive to do the trucks we have. That's our, that's our goal, is to change our, our color scheme and kind of just rebrand the service.
Yeah, we're not what that service was, we're something entirely different and new, so, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you. Okay, next up, new business, Mr. Jerry Walden.
It's kind of like having a try high reunion here tonight, but.
We won't say how many years, Jerry.
I'm just happy to have those years behind me. I appreciate you giving me some time to come here tonight to speak to you about a project that myself and Aaron Deacon, who are fellow city councilmen, and Corey Murphy, who's the president of the Newcastle Henry County EDC, have been working on. And basically it's gotten to a point where we need to get others involved now. And this is an exchange of State Road one oh three and I seventy. I'd like to go through why we have been pursuing this, give a little bit of history about it and what needs to take place next. So during, during my and Aaron's first term, Corey set up a couple of meetings with some economic development specialists and I don't know if you guys attended those or not. But each of those specialists made a statement that the number one thing that brings about economic development is ease of access to the interstate system. And that sparked my interest. You know, myself, I've never understood how the state would allow a state road intersecting an interstate not have an exchange. So looking into this, myself, looking at the highway system throughout all of Indiana, with all the interstates and all the state roads, State Road one oh three is the only state road intersecting an interstate in Indiana that does not have an exchange. Now, you do have two thirty-six up close to Anderson, but it makes a little L shape. State Road one oh three connects US forty to State Road thirty-eight, State Road thirty-six. It goes directly by our newly developed airport. It goes by all the industrial parks here in Newcastle. It goes on out to our hospital, here in Cowan Memorial Hospital. I think, Aaron thinks and Corey thinks, it's time to make a change. And with the passage of the infrastructure bill through the Senate, I think things might be right. The state is going to improve North Sixteenth Street from Broad out to the hospital. It is going to be a total redo, they're going to have to do the base. is going to be a total redo, they're going to have to do the base all the way up, new Mayor York has convinced them to extend the sidewalks out to at least Washington Street, and we are looking to extend those sidewalks on out to the hospital, which would make sense. So that connection, just thinking about that, and our belief, that would lead to some tools in Corey's toolbag to bring in corporate development, industrial development, residential development, between five hundred, seventy, State Road three, and one oh three. So what I'd like for you to do is go around that area and kind of look at it, and take a good look at it, and while you're there, go over the overpass, see what kind of shape it's in. Bobby, you know, the one-inch rebar is exposed, the half-inch rebar is exposed, so at some point, the state is going to have to redo that overpass anyway, and if they do that, why wouldn't we go ahead and garner to get an exchange put in there? That makes sense to us. When they started I-70, it's actually started in Richmond back in the sixties and moved We missed an opportunity as a county to do something that would have been really, really good. And why it happened, I don't know, that's in the past. We need to look towards the future, and in doing that, we were able to set up a meeting back in 2019 with the governor's office, probably one of the best meetings with state officials that I've ever been a part of, and I've been through some, being a public educator in my job as head of testing here at the high school for twenty-three years. They asked some very good questions, they gave us time, we were not rushed whatsoever. We also spoke about State Road three construction, we're going to get some sidewalks there because of that. They understand that it's something that should be done. I've had meetings with the mayor, of course, and our president, Rex Peckinpaul, we talked about it as a city council, I had the backing of those groups, the mayor, President Peckinpaul, and the city council, to move on with this. I've had discussions with Senator Leising and Representative Saunders, we'll have to have some more discussion with them and hopefully sway them a little more than where they are right now. I represent the city of Newcastle with the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, which Ed, you're a part of too, and we had that webinar where Congressman Pence was a part of it, did you sit in on that, Ed? I can't remember.
The last...
Well, there was a web seminar that we had to have on Zoom, it was back in...
No, I didn't get on the Zoom.
It was in December, and I brought it up to him, and he said, Jerry, call my Columbus office, give them your information, and they'll get right back with you. I did it the next hour, called the office, the next day I got a phone call, two weeks later I had a meeting with the deputy chief of staff. A week after that, Congressman Pence and his staff put together some grant opportunities through the federal government that would help us move this along. He's for it. I was totally impressed with the promptness that Congressman Pence and his office gave Where do we go from here? Governor's office, Congressman Pence's office, basically said it's time to get more than just you three musketeers involved with this. You're going to have to put some skin in the game. And discussions with Aaron and Corey, Corey has basically suggested it's probably time to take a site survey, and that, of course, will cost some money. We're going to have to put some committees together, and we're going to have some public input with this, you know, that's part of the deal. Guys, I just, you know, I graduated from Tri-Hi, I grew up here in Newcastle, so I'm a little bit of a unique person, Aaron's the same way, he graduated here in Newcastle, he had grandparents living in Lewisville. I still go to church in Lewisville, we go over that overpass every Sunday that we go to church. And I think, I truly believe this, that we have an opportunity to really give Henry County an opportunity to grow. You go east to Richmond, you see growth there around the intersections. You go east to Cambridge City, State Road one, seeing development going on there. You go to Greenfield, you head west, Nice Town has an opportunity now, Greenfield's exploding, Mount Comfort's exploding, Greenfield's adding four hundred and fifty new housing units with all the growth that's going on there. Why can't we be a part of that? We have the same thing that Mount Comfort has, airport right by the interstate. So I really would like for you to come up with some questions to put forward to us, we'd like to come back as a group and take on those questions, but really think about this information I've given you tonight. It's in our county comprehensive plan, too, so it's just picking that football up and running on with it and doing something that I think would advance Henry County. I may not see the end result of it, but that's okay, it's not about me. I'm not doing this for me, I'm doing it for this county, I'm doing it for this city, I'm doing it for the people of this county, where we can grow and be as strong as what we used to be in the past with all the manufacturing and industry that we had here in our county. So I'm just asking that you think about that, drive around that area, look up on the map, make sure that I'm not misleading you, I believe I'm correct on that, come up with questions, and we'd like to come back and take on those questions and answer anything that you might have. Okay, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jared Martin will not be here tonight. Purdue Extension, effective date August 2021, Kelsey Myers, Extension Educator, 4-H Youth Development and Health and Human Services or Sciences, will assume responsibility as the county extension director in Henry County, and will have full signature authority and responsibility serving as department head of the Purdue Cooperative Extension Service in Henry County. Molly Hunt, Area Seven Director, Purdue Cooperative Extension Service.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we have to take action, I think it's just a notification.
Just an informational?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, then moving on, we've already approved the Brock lunch on the courthouse lawn, we have Item Five, Spiceland Township Library Board Appointment. To the Henry County Commissioners, as president of Spiceland Township Library Board, I've been informed that I must submit this letter on behalf of Brenda Malloyed, for secretary of this board. We appreciate your attention to this issue as soon as possible. And then we have a letter from Brenda. Hi, Brenda Malloy, would like for you to consider my appointment to the Spiceland Township Public Library. My term expired December 31st, 2019. I had submitted a request to be appointed in November of 2019. I made several attempts to contact previous commissioners for a response, I had talked to the commissioner's secretary, I left phone messages for Kim Cronk and Ed Yenos, but there was no response, blah, 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 either of them. According to records, it has not been on any agenda for consideration. I would appreciate your attention to this matter. The term I am fulfilling would expire December 31st, 2023.
Make a motion to appoint Brenda Malloy to the Spiceland Township Library Board as recommended by Charlie Burkett.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero. Brenda is now the secretary of the library board. Any other new business from the commissioners? Is there anyone present from the public that would like to speak about any issue? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.